Good evening. Thank you all for coming. I called the March twentieth, twenty twenty-five City Council Special Meeting to Order. All council members are present and accounted for. And I'll turn the meeting now over to the City Manager.
Good evening, Council and Members of the Public. This is our work session focused on the Community Budget Forum. So we are looking forward to hearing from Members of the Public. And we also have a presentation after that portion, is that the order? Yeah, following that to continue to work on the budget, revisiting some of the conversations last week about funding outside agencies and to keep you moving through the rest of the process as we look to close the budget on the fourteenth. So Ms. Hamill's gonna walk you through the rest.
Testing. Oh, you didn't, you couldn't hear Sam?
All right, does that better?
Yeah.
All right, let's try that again, sorry. So, good evening, Council and Members of the Public. I want to make sure that we get started through this process. Tonight's budget session is focused on the Community Budget Forum. So this is an opportunity for Council to hear from the public on any matters pertaining to the budget. So we look forward to hearing what items you bring forward. The goal for tonight is to hear those things and give you a chance to think about those things. And then we will swiftly move into continuing our work on things that we've been talking about. We're gonna revisit the outside agencies conversation that we had last week and move you forward into upcoming sessions to help you close out the budget process on April fourteenth.
Thank you. So we now have, this is the public input process and we have about nine people signed up. And after we finish this list, if anyone else wants to speak, we will certainly hear those names. Is it three, three minutes? So I'll read the names, you can come up and state your residence and we will hear what you have to say. The first name is Suzanne Bailey and the next name is Taylor Fromm. You can be, start getting ready. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Bailey. I'm a resident of Frye's Spring, a parishioner at Holy Comforter Catholic Church in downtown Charlottesville. And through my church, I am a member of IMPACT, a multi-congregation organization promoting social justice, with which I know you are all familiar. As you know, for the last several years, IMPACT has been advocating for reduced wait times for cat buses so that those who must rely on cat can get to jobs, medical appointments, and worship within a reasonable time. And so that those who have a car will help unclog our roads and opt for the more environmentally free, friendly bus service. We were encouraged to learn that Garland Williams, CAT's director, has a goal of getting wait times on all CAT routes down to thirty minutes in order to have a minimally functional level of service. But to get to that level of service, Mr. Williams tells us that CAT will need at least eighty bus drivers. IMPACT members were glad last year when you were able to find money in the budget for an additional eight drivers, bringing the number of funded bus driver positions from fifty-nine to sixty-seven. But we've been disturbed to learn that none of those newly funded eight spots have been filled. And we were further disappointed to learn that while transportation, which covers everything from bike lanes to paved roads and new sidewalks and everything in between, is mentioned in the budget, transit, which refers specifically to CAT bus service, is nowhere to be found. Not a single new bus driver position is included in the proposed budget. This omission is inconsistent both with insurances and the, from you over the years that transit is a priority for the city and with the CAT director's goal of achieving universal thirty-minute wait times. I myself am not a regular bus driver. There is no bus service that goes anywhere near my office on Ivy Road, which is just over the bypass in Albemarle County. But my husband, whose workplace is in the city, just over two miles from our home, regularly rides the trolley, that is, when it's running. Just as with all the other CAT bus routes, the lack of drivers means there are no subs, which means that if a driver needs to be out, there is no bus service. He has options. If he misses the trolley, he can bike, he can rent a scooter, or even walk. But not everyone has that luxury, especially if they are disabled or carrying groceries or corralling small children. I acknowledge that hiring new bus drivers has proved challenging, but there is no reason to give up on recruiting the bus drivers needed to meet the goal of thirty-minute wait times on all bus routes. I ask that you make every effort to fund eighty bus drivers in the fiscal year 2026 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Taylor? Thank you. The next speaker will be Daniella Pretzer?
Good evening. I'm a resident of Albemarle County, but I'm also the Executive Director of the Mediation Center of Charlottesville, which is located on Sation Place in the city of Charlottesville. We provide mediation services primarily for the courts, mediating child custody and child support. But we've also been expanding and with the support of the Vibrant Communities Fund in last year, we started initiative to work on community disputes. And this is a complex initiative because the goal was to recruit community residents who traditionally would not be mediators and train them so that they would be able to mediate neighborhood disputes like dogs, you know, barking dogs or garbage or, you know, parking or property damage, all the kinds of things that can really fester and can really explode in a community. At this point, we've got seventeen people that are in the process of getting trained. We found that the training process was more challenging than we thought it would be so that they're real, we're still, we only have like four or five that are really ready to mediate and we're about to start getting complaints through Nextdoor and other outlets in the city. And the fact that this year we were not selected for funding through the Vibrant Communities Fund will mean that, that rather than those mediators being able to come into the community and really get going with the skills that they're building and for us to continue to develop them, instead, the program will be cut back significantly without funding. So some of the, some of the residents, I think that so far of the seventeen people half are African-American. They're, and the FAR interns are lined up to start as another group to become community mediators. And so I guess we're humbly asking if there's a way that the city can find some support so that community mediation can continue to grow in this community.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cliff Seltzer?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. I was here last week speaking about the Vibrant Community Fund. My name is Daniella Pretzer. I am the Executive Director of the Bridgeline. And we provide services for people with brain injuries. We have three programs, a residential program where people live in and serve by staff. And we have a case management program and a pre-vocational day program. And all those are extremely important because there's no other entity in this area who serves people with brain injuries, which includes people with trauma, people with, had a brain tumor, had encephalitis, we have a person who got bitten by a tick, that by a tick, by a mosquito when he was young, severe brain injury through that, strangulations and so on. And so why I'm here again is because I do really would like to, for you to reconsider to support and fund the two programs that were cut this time. We had always been either solid or mostly exemplary. And I'd like to understand better why we're not funded, but I do like for you to reconsider funding as at the current level. So I really would appreciate that. And I am happy to talk to you individually to explain more what we do in detail. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker after Cliff will be Alex.
Thank you, Mayor Wade and everybody and everyone today, this evening. Good evening. My name is Cliff Seltzer and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Bridgeline. Formerly, I was a board member of the Boys and Girls Club of America in South Florida. I also worked with fundraising for St. Jude's Children's Hospitals. And I did work for quite some time for, he's passed now, but the senior, John Kluge. They built the children's hospital here in Charlottesville. He often spoke about Charlottesville. And I'll go moving quickly up here. I have a brain injury because of a car accident about sixteen years ago. I was rear-ended by a drunk driver on my way to work here in Charlottesville. I was stopped for a school bus, by the way, that was loading children. And the responding officer said that they would have been terribly injured if I did not keep the brakes on my car, even though I was completely stopped legally. Because of my brain injury, I spiraled down. Unfortunately, I became unemployed and eventually homeless. My entire health was affected. About six years ago, I learned about the Bridgeline and became a member of the Case Management Day Program. The staff helped me get my life organized. A brain injury can leave you very disorientated and unable to do simple tasks. I have stable housing now in West Haven. And I'm thankful for everything that Bridgeline has done to help me get housing and my life more organized so I can help others, hopefully, which I'm doing at West Haven. I now have language interpreters who are helping, many people are coming from other countries to speak or understand what we're doing. And my mentor is Ms. Joy Johnson, who I applaud. And she's a wonderful person to help, allow me to help with, with housing, to help others. So anyways, they support me. It's really important that I can speak tonight, but there's others that are wheelchair-bound who speak with a computer. And I'm trying to speak for them tonight because there's many, they can't, cannot go to a library. They cannot go to like maybe Haven because it would be dangerous for them. Because some of them are adult, they all are, excuse me, but they're over twenty-one. And it may be dangerous for those persons to go to a library by themselves or something, they need supervision. And the Bridgeline does it without making it clinical. Yes, they're very professional, high-level people with different degrees, but it's a clubhouse in a way, that's the very thing. I really would like to invite you guys, if you just have a chance, swing by the Bridgeline. You know, get with Daniella, Dr. Pretzer, excuse me. And maybe take a quick look at it. Because I know Sally Housen, I know that some of the senators were really impressed with this nice clubhouse that the members helped maintain. So we all pitch in where we can. So I'll leave it with that. I hope that I can convey an important message to support the Bridgeline as I'm doing my best to speak for those that cannot speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Cliff. The next speaker after Alex will be Harley Peterson?
Thanks, councilors. It's good to be here. My name is Alex Joyner. I'm the, I'm an Albemarle County resident, but I am pastor of Charlottesville First United Methodist Church and a regular rider on the five and seven lines of the city bus line. And I think we're missing a big opportunity by not having merch. I wouldn't have a number five and seven T-shirt because I'm really grateful for having it there. There are a number of things that I'm grateful for in this city. One of them is this, that it is a city that talks about and cares about public transit and that has councilors who in the midst of a whole lot of hard decision-making have expressed support for making transit a priority for this community. And much of what I have to say is, is right in line with what Suzanne has said already, Suzanne Bailey has said already. But we have a vision here of what it would take to be a world-class transit city. A city, and we have a system that has the bones and the potential to grow into that. There are places in the city that are not served by lines, but there is some flexibility in our system. We've seen lines change some this year in response to changing needs. And we have some good trunk lines that can be built out. But without regular wait times and, I mean, without a consistent wait time and a reliable system, that's where the growth needs to happen. As I said, I ride pretty frequently. I started doing that when our solar panel project happened here in the city. And so parking was at a premium and the bus line was a great way to get here. But there are many days when I don't know exactly how I'm gonna get home. Because twice in the last two weeks, I have been at Barrett's Road for forty minutes because instead of two lines on a bus line, there were three, I mean, instead of three, there were two. So that it makes for a very unreliable and unpredictable ride home. So I see what, I'm also co-chair of the IMPACT movement here in Charlottesville, the Interfaith Movement that you've heard about and that I know many of you know about. And we've heard you say that it will take eighty-plus driver positions in order for us to get to just that minimal level of a thirty-minute wait time. We also see that it does look like there are plans at the moment in the, at all of those bus drivers. We are here to try to help you do what you said you wanted to do, which is to make that dream a reality and to bring us to that minimal level of having the thirty-minute wait times, which would make for a reliable system. And so on behalf of all the people I work with in IMPACT, we can't wait for the bus. Thanks.
Thank you, Alex. Harley, and the next speaker will be Xavier Corvington? I think I pronounced that name correct, but the speaker now is Harley Peterson? Haley, I'm sorry.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Haley Peterson. I am the Executive Director of Meals on Wheels of Charlottesville-Albemarle. And we are an organization that has been providing meals and wellness checks to our community's most vulnerable since nineteen seventy-seven. Every day of the week, we provide a hot, ready-to-eat meal directly to the doors of over two-hundred-and-eighty of our neighbors who struggle to both access and prepare meals for themselves. And this can be for a variety of reasons. It can be due to aging, it can be due to chronic illness, it can be due to physical or cognitive disabilities. And our clients age in range, range in age from thirty-two to one-hundred-and-two. Our clients, who are some of the most isolated and at-risk individuals, they benefit from not only the meals that we are delivering to their doorstep, but also from the vital human connection that we provide. According to a survey that we conducted with our clients, thirty-three percent of them stated that Meals on Wheels, the volunteer, is the only human interaction that they get on a single day. This really underscores the unique role that we play in providing both companionship and a critical safety net that allows ninety-three percent of our clients to live safely and independently in their homes. In addition, we also provide access to library services, free pantry staples, fresh produce, weekly pet food for those with cats and dogs, and birthday and holiday gifts. Despite our impact, Meals on Wheels of Charlottesville-Albemarle operates without any state, federal, or city funding up until this point. The situation is really challenging, especially considering that over ninety percent of our clients qualify to have fully subsidized meals. Most of our clients are living well below the federal poverty line and cannot afford to pay the six dollars that we charge for a full meal. Our services are really essential for combating food insecurity, social isolation, poor health outcomes, issues that disproportionately affect the elderly and disabled in our community. We lie really heavily on donations from individuals and local organizations and a dedicated team of over four-hundred volunteers that help keep our wheels turning. However, as the demand continues to rise, we are now getting four to ten applications every single day. The need for substantial funding becomes more urgent. I ask you all to think of your parents, think of your family members who might live out of town and live alone. Many of our clients live on their own with their families away. So consider how a daily ready-to-eat meal and a wellness check would bring you peace of mind, knowing that each weekday someone would come by, check in, deliver a meal, a library book, cat food, and a sense of community connection. By supporting Meals on Wheels, you're directly supporting public health, reduced health risks associated with social isolation, food insecurity, and you're enabling more of our neighbors to age with dignity in their home. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. Looking forward to participating in the Week of Champions next week in preparing and delivering meals. Thank you for your work. The next speaker is, I hope I said the name correct, Xavier Corvington? And then we have Heidi, Heidi and Shannon Flanagan?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Xavier. I am an intern at FAR, which is the Public Housing Association of Residents. I was raised in Louisa County and I served in the Marine Corps before moving here to Charlottesville. I've been a resident with CRHA for the past year and a half. I'm coming today because I'm very concerned about the youth in Charlottesville. There's not enough things for the youth, specifically teenagers and young adults, to do. When I grew up, back in my teenage years, Charlottesville was the place to go. Every weekend, me and my friends, we would get dressed up. We would just come out here just to hang out at the mall and it kept us out of trouble. Now, I don't see anything for the teenagers to do. And it's led to a lot of fighting and a lot of the teenagers being the ones that are arrested for violent crimes here in Charlottesville. If you look at the Charlottesville Police Department's feed, you'll see that within the last six months, most arrests have been teenagers aging from sixteen to nineteen. However, on the other end, there are a lot of talented youth here in Charlottesville. And we need opportunities for them to thrive. So I'm asking that money be put aside in the budget for programs for teenagers and young adults. Thank you.
Thank you for your service to the country, Ms. Corvington. Thank you. The next speaker after the Flanaggans would be Sandra? Sandra?
Hi there. I'm Heidi Flanagan and?
Shannon.
And we were here last year. Last year, when we came here, Shannon was living in town and I was still living in Croze. And now I live in Charlottesville. And so I had heard all about the bus riding experiences and now I'm experiencing it myself. I'm from, we're both from Vineyard Church and part of the IMPACT movement as well. So I understand there's a lot of uncertainty with the times right now and budgets. But not having any allocation for any bus drivers is really hard. We had new allocations last year, which helped. And the bus drivers do a great job here, by the way. They're wonderful. But still, there are a lot of wait times. I know now, I go to work, I work at UVA, I'm a nurse there. And now I really experience it. I get on the bus with lots of people. And this morning, before seven o'clock, the bus was full and then coming here, it was full. So the one thing we know is that the population is growing. There's gonna be more cars, there's less places to park, it's very expensive. The people who are riding the buses right now are riding it for shopping, medical appointments, going to work, going to different activities. And I'm just asking you to consider funding. We need to get to eighty, but to stop and not fund any is almost like being in dead water. So it would be wonderful just to keep moving. And if we can get to eighty, that would be wonderful because this need is not going to go away. It's only gonna get much bigger. How did I do?
We love the buses and we want more bus drivers. And hopefully, we will get some more. And so that way, we can be on time to work and like to our appointments and everything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did, you did nail it. Sandra, what's the? Madam? Yes.
Hello, everybody. Okay. Good evening, council members. My name is Sandra Yvette Avalas, two oh one West Main Street. I'm here on behalf of Charlottesville United for Public Education. It means more teachers, more resources, and a step towards ensuring our school meets the needs of every student, and for that, we thank you. But as we stand here tonight, we cannot afford to let gratitude become a stopping point. We live in uncertain times. We see the headlines, state and federal threats to public education, policies that put our most vulnerable students at risk, funding battles that force schools to fight just to provide the bare minimum. Charlottesville United has been in the community listening. We have gathered voices from across our city, Prospect, West Haven, South First Street, CHS, just to name a few. And the message is very clear. Our families want more than the basics. They want real investment in social, emotional wellness, school safety, and educator support. We must ensure that our students are not just making it through school, but thriving in school as well. The budget gives, the budget gets us on the floor, but the floor is not where we build dreams. If we believe in a strong future for Charlottesville, then we must commit to ensuring that every child, regardless of zip code, language, or income, has access to world-class education. That means planning now for long-term sustained investment. It means ensuring that projects like the Walker Pre-K Center don't stall. It means being honest and transparent about surplus funds and questioning why schools operating on a needs-based budget are ever asked to dip into reserves. Education is not charity. It is the foundation of our city's future. These children will one day be our teachers, our doctors, our artists, and our leaders. Investing in them is not optional, it is the only way forward. And the community is behind this effort. I have nearly five hundred signed postcards from community members, signatures collected at events like the Johnson Elementary Bingo Night, the Black Love Survey and Symposium, the Black Teacher Celebration hosted by BPN, the annual Cisupu de UVA College Visit, which was a joint collaboration of the Cisupu de Coalition, as well as Creciendo Juntos, which means "Growing Together," and it is an advocacy group that is supporting our Latinx youth here in the city of Charlottesville and beyond, and many more events. These signatures represent a chorus of voices calling for strong sustained investment in our schools. We will continue this, these important conversations, we will continue supporting wherever possible, because the future of Charlottesville depends on the choices we make today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the people that have signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm on the Board of Directors of the Mediation Center of Charlottesville, and I wanted to follow up on our request to consider extending the funding for community mediation training. Quite simply, what we're trying to do is train community members to solve disputes in their own community before we involve the police and the courts and other government agencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gloria Beard, and I'm from the People's Coalition, and this is Earl Hicks. He's also a member. And we're here to speak about the expansion of the jail. The purpose, I understand, but to spend seventy-three million dollars at the end, because it's going to cost Charlottesville Albemarle County and Nelson County forty-nine million, and with taxes, in the years, it's going to be seventy-three million. And now, we, we're really short on housing. We need housing, y'all. And I understand, but that much money over time, is, we could be putting that in housing for people that's homeless. And then, the mental ill, they can't get well in a cell, no way. They want to put the mental ill people there. And right now, they don't, I don't know, I'm told, most of stays are two to three days, so, that much space. I agree with, you know, renovating, because everything needs renovating, even homes, everything. But to spend seventy-three million over time, when we need housing, the teachers need help in schools. The President's talking about cutting back on things for the school, for the children. And like somebody said tonight, the children are our future, and they can be cutting back, and they need things. So the teachers, I mean, they work and they got families, so they got to dig in their pockets to, you know, spend their money to take care of the children's needs that can't afford it. Think about it, you all. Seventy-three million, and people just can't get well, especially our mental ill people. There's no place to put mental ill people. I think Earl gonna take the rest of the time. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you.
Also, my name's Earl Hicks, also People's Coalition. Jails should not be the primary providers of mental health care. The expansion only includes seven special purpose mental health beds. This does not justify a seventy-three million investment. Jails are harmful, not healing. Incarceration causes trauma, worsens mental health, and mental health conditions. Community-based mental health treatment and diversion programs keep people out of jail and provide real support. All that I want to say is, take action. Stop the jail expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. The green thing, oh, Ms. Beard dropped it. Oh, I'm sorry. Who else would like to speak? Yes, sir, in the red shirt?
Thank you for the FAR shirt.
Yeah. Thank you, Michael.
Thanks for letting me come up and speak.
Yes, sir.
I'm a part of FAR. My name's Mike Jackson. I'm a resident of Charlottesville. I live at 501 First South Street. I'm also an active intern at FAR. We got an issue going over the youth we were talking about, and we wanted to help them out, you know, so we can get more things done, to solve the problem of kids getting in trouble, parents having to worry about discipline as much, if we can get a little bit more activities for them, if it get a little bit more funding for them to have places to go and things to do. I had another issue come up with Crescent Hall, where I stay at. You know, you got some handicapped people there, elderly folks, this might be offbeat a little bit, but this is what we got going on. We had one towing company, and they were just, if you didn't have stuff, you know, tag right or inspection sticker, but most of the people there are handicapping old, and if they do have a vehicle, they're doing all they can to keep it on the road, just trying to figure out why they got towing companies, you know, like, almost targeting the elderly and disabled, you know, so they got a new company coming in, it was Ace before, now it's going to be Small Town, to talk about it Monday, but I'm going to be going out of town, because I'm trying to go to DC to another, you know, conference like this, so we can find out what's going on. That's just another problem that you've got to think about. You know, a lot of people, they have good jobs or might have insurance or things that they can sustain with, but what about the ones who are disabled? I heard another guy like Cliff was talking about, from this situation where they have been in a bad situation, they can't help themselves anymore. So, you know, as a member of the city, member of FAR, and just an active person in the community, I just want to speak out and let you know what was going on, and thank you for letting me have my opportunity.
Mr. Jackson, excuse me, sir, did you say that a towing company is coming into Crescent Hall?
They're going to be, let's say they had Ace Towing leasing out for one, you know, to go around. Now they're gone, they got rid of them for some reason, and now they're going to have a small town.
I'll talk to
Yeah, it's a small town going to be coming through, and I was just, just wondering why, because a lot of people didn't come outside and get ready to go to work, but then the car's gone, so then they got to worry about two hundred, one seventy-five, and you might not get your check till the first of the month, so, I'm just throwing that out there.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
I'll talk to Mr. Sales about it, sir.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure that out, why, of all places in the city, where people can't get around. Thank you.
Ma'am, in the blue shirt?
I'm Dr. Mary Preston, and also a member of Impact, and this affects my patients directly. They stand in the rain, I have many patients who are very frail, they are standing in the rain, the bus stop is not near the office, the, and there are obviously not enough bus drivers, because they have to wait a long time to have a bus. My office is on East Jefferson Street and Eleventh. Some people have hiked all the way up that very steep Eleventh, Eleventh Street to get to the office, and it's just, it's not safe, it's not good, so we need more drivers, we need more bus stops, we need a lot more in this city that we, if we care about taking care of particularly our older patients, our older, our older colleagues, our older neighbors, and people who may have trouble getting around. I have one patient who makes three stops, and so it takes her a very long time to get to the, get to the office, and when she does, she's exhausted, which is not really conducive to good health. So, as much as you can do, we need to have more drivers, we need to have more stops, we need to have a better system, less waiting time. Often, my patients will get, get there very late or very early. Very early, they have to wait a long time, and then they have to figure out what the bus stops are and how to get home. So, thank you for your consideration, and please take this very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is John Frazee, 1404 East Market Street, also a member of Impact. I used to ride the bus. Hey, how are you? And I don't really ride it much anymore, and that's mainly because it's unreliable. The time between buses can be anywhere from fifteen minutes to an hour and fifteen minutes. I typically would ride, I work downtown, and I often would have meetings. I attend St. Paul's Memorial Episcopal Church down at the university, and I would take the trolley. That'd be my primary way of getting there, especially on rainy days, I like to ride my bike as well, and appreciate all you've done for bike use in the town. I would love to see more attention paid to public transportation and buses. I feel it's really important. I feel as the city continues to grow, and we see more and more, you know, density in the city, and we are talking about difficulty driving around, the roads get crowded, it would be a benefit to have an infrastructure in place as we continue to see more and more people living in the city, rather than chasing the tail and ending up with a lot of traffic problems, and as a bike rider, I would like to see fewer cars on the road, if possible, and more buses. So, if we can look to hire more bus drivers, as has been discussed, and, you know, I know there's always look at, they're always looking at the routes and making sure they're efficient. Anything you can do to make the bus system work more efficiently would be greatly appreciated, and I appreciate all the work that you do. Thanks so much.
Thank you, John. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes.
My name is Mer McLernan. I live in the city, and I am also with Impact, and I can say that Impact has definitely had a big impact on me. This is my second year working with numerous congregations, and what I want to share is that before, I just didn't, I just didn't get it. I mean, I think I have the luxury of being able to walk out every day, get in my car, and go wherever I want to, and I have since actually gotten to know some folks who are waiting for the bus because I picked them up. I live very close to Rose Hill Drive, and I would see them out waiting, and as you said, in the rain, or in the heat, or in the cold that we've experienced this winter, and I, it made me feel so different to, I couldn't just ride, drive by them anymore. I, I, my heart went out to them, and I've gotten to know one woman in particular who works at a local grocery store, and she has a really hard time getting to work sometimes because of the wait times and everything, and the bus also doesn't, she sometimes has to work double shifts trying to make enough money to make her rent and her food and stuff, and the bus doesn't run late enough for her to be able to get home, so coworkers have extended their courtesy to drive her, but she gives them gas money, which is hard on her, but it's the way that she is able to get home safely. And so, I just want to say that for me, I, I hear all the statistics, and I totally get it, and I'm really appreciative of what the city, the council, has been trying to do to make, to make the transit system better, but for me, it's definitely gone, as I said, to a whole different level about appreciating what I'm, the luxury that I have, and my heart goes out to those folks who don't, and it makes a really big difference to have gotten to know some of these people and hear what they, what they're going through. So, I appreciate your time. I do hope that you can consider making the bus system the best it can be. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? Thank you all so much for your comments. I'm going to now close the public hearing, and I know that we have a presentation.
Thank you, public, for speaking and joining us tonight. We're going to continue on with an update, some follow-up from last week's work session. We're going to talk about some debt, and then ask for some information for what you all would like to talk about with the CIP next week. So at that, I'll turn it back over to City Manager Sanders.
So we're going to revisit, for those that were not a part of, were not able to tune in last week, this will be kind of framed as a way for you to, to stay caught up as to what the conversation is, because this is a continuation. Last week, I provided to you, councilors, a strategy that was included in this year's budget to bring forward a council-directed funding opportunity, and the goal was that we recognize that when you're doing the review process for Vibrant Communities Fund and other related activities, at times, you are interested in making changes, making additions, and asking questions, and we appreciate all of that. I know you don't think I said, I believe, you don't think I mean that, but I do. But ideally, what we thought we would do this time around was to make sure that there were funds available that were flexible, to give you the opportunity to also put your thumb on some of the various decisions, because we are managing competitive processes using community-based review teams and committees to make recommendations to you, but we also recognize that you would like to participate in that. So, one of the questions that I posed to you, and you all will recall receiving an email where I laid everything out as to what we needed to do, next steps, was to identify what that fund would amount to. You have a standing strategic initiatives fund today. That fund has roughly three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in it right now. I have recommended it within the budget, and in I have recommended within the budget an increase of $140,000, therefore making it $500,000, which is the first line that you see here. We were able to see a reduction in the proposed financing project for the ACRJ jail expansion. So that brings back $234,000 that was not accounted for other than the ACRJ project. So now it is flexible cash to spend. We made some adjustments. Those are my recommendations of adjustments to the Housing Opportunity Program Support Competitive Grant, the CAF, the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund Account, and our CDBG Community Development Block Grant, which is federal funding. All of those leaving smaller balances available for discretionary action that I wanted to preserve for council. And we were able to identify roughly $140,000, $104,000 in the CIP that was available. These are funds that were, we could have used. We set up some funds during COVID. We expended most of those funds. There was a balance left over and this balance has been sitting. And as we've been working to clean up the CIP and make sure that every dollar that's in the CIP is an active dollar in the CIP, we have uncovered that these, this $104,000 was not. So that collectively adds up to a little over a million dollars. And I propose to you all that this would be a council-directed funding opportunity. In hearing from most of you since last week, you indicated support for this action. So we're there. There's a million dollars to spend. Next slide. I also shared with you that you, there was an indication of a desire for me to develop an off-cycle request process. I reluctantly considered that because, as you know, I am a creature of habit. I like process. I like order. And ideally, I would like everyone to come in during the portals that we open and when we close them, they are closed. But I understand that we are humans and we don't always like that. So what I did was made it possible to set up a, a process for me to receive off-cycle requests. They don't go to staff. They don't go to a committee. They come to me and they rest with me until it's time to bring them to you. So over the course of our competitive round, which is roughly September to January, these requests came in. They were not considered as a part of any of the competitive rounds because those various rounds had opened and/or closed. Therefore, they would have not been able to be considered amongst the other applications. So these are requests that have come outside of that process. The two that you see in asterisk next to are identified as emergency. Emergency in that BRAC, the Blue Ridge Area Coalition for the Homeless Lost Grant Funds to, to support homelessness. It is a period of time from June of '25 to January of '26 that would go unfunded. It amounts to $250,000. So that is why it is labeled the way that it is. And Piedmont Housing Alliance brought forward eviction, eviction prevention program, two parts to the program. They are looking to receive $162,000 from the city to protect staff positions and $50,000 for cash assistance if they were able to get it. They don't need the cash assistance if they don't get the staff salaries because the program won't continue. So that is the reason why one is marked urgent and the other is not. Because I think they have a plan for how they would continue the program if they were able to keep the staff. You have the coloring there to reflect what has transpired in your consideration over the past few days. Green means more than one of you said you were interested in funding this. Yellow means one of you said you wanted to consider funding this. If there's no highlight, no one said they were interested in funding this. So that is the approach that we are taking here at this time. So what I am saying to you is I've heard from enough of you that you are interested in supporting BRAC. And what I would like us to be able to do, if you are so inclined, is to consider the highlighted items and make a determination on if you are interested in going forward so that we can reduce what is available for us to spend these funds on to try to make sure that we can account for whatever amount you do spend. So I'll stop there and ask, are there any questions?
Yeah, are there questions, Michael? Did, I'll start with you.
No, I guess I can just provide the, the feedback that from this list, you know, I'm supportive of funding the lost grant for BRAC as well as Piedmont Housing's, Piedmont Housing Alliance eviction prevention staff salaries. Just kind of is my, my first reaction in terms of the priority, PHA priority to the cash assistance. I mean, if they're able to figure that out, that may be used for funding some, somewhere else for other housing programs that are also, you know, facing challenges at the moment. But that's kind of my first pass feedback.
So one of the questions that I had asked was, just for more information, I'm trying to find my email. What, what was up with the Uheru Foundation? Because I didn't find them listed in last year's VCF summary. And then you were, thank you for your responses. But it wasn't, I didn't get any more details about what, what they were. What is reentry home? What are they asking for? What is the program?
So they provide reentry services today that are now mostly focused on housing individuals, formerly incarcerated individuals, returning citizens that are trying to reestablish themselves. Their desire is to gain access to additional property so that they can house more individuals. So that's the request.
Ah, okay. So this would help them purchase?
It will be a lease, a lease arrangement so that they could then house additional people.
Okay. And what happens if, if they don't get this funding? Does that fall apart?
They wouldn't do it. Yeah. I mean, they have funding for what they're doing. This is about expansion.
This is a bigger, bigger fish. Okay. And then in the, can you explain why the, the Dogwood lot is 100K is highlighted?
That was a, that was a recommendation from one of you.
Oh, just, okay. So not all of it, but some of it?
Yes.
I'll say a little more about that.
Okay. Yeah. And I, I read, I went back and read. I found the email you had sent. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Yeah, I mean, I, if, if these had been, for, so I'm on the scholarship program board. I missed the last meeting because I was absolutely laid out with the flu. But the, I've been to the meetings where we've talked about this program and expanding to the adult services. Other than an off-cycle request in this way, how else would they apply for additional funding to build it into the budget earlier?
This would be it because what happened with the inception of the program, it was a direct ask to council. So the $250,000 that was provided came from a council appropriation. It wasn't through any competitive process. It really doesn't fit. It's different.
Yeah.
So I think that's the reason why it is also here on this list.
Is there a, timing aside, like what would have been the process for them asking or do they just ask?
There isn't. This is really it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I'll just chime in with that because I think Lloyd and I both kind of served on the board. I served on the school board member and then, I don't think I served as council. But they usually do their own fundraising.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, and so I think this is that they saw the need. They were getting more and more requests from adults. So, but I think that's what that did.
What, what I'll say to you is the way, and I'm not sure, I didn't go back and, and really look exactly at how it was presented the first time around. But it is the basis of why I continue to say to you in my time here that the Strategic Initiatives Fund is a thing for you to have. That's a good decision to have funds available so that something like this can be considered at that moment. For you might want to help start something one time. You might want to start something and give it a bridge to when you can then have us figure out how to work it into the budget. That is really the flexibility that comes with having a, a fund available for something like that. So I would say that is why, the way I look at this, this is the best way for it to come forward.
Okay. Because, yeah, I would be interested in helping start that process. But it feels like with our limited 100,000 right, or 100, or a million right now, that's a quarter of it. And it feels like a, a big chunk of the, because we are in such unprecedented times to commit that much out of this flex fund at, right now, instead of building it into the budget on a larger scale.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Lloyd?
Was, was there any, I, I can't let you get past. Can you tell me what you're interested in? Because I'm really looking to see what can we whittle this list down to? Because we have more lists is why.
Yes. I mean, I was thumbs up on BRAC.
Okay.
For sure. And then same with the, it seems, was I the one who said yes to PHA or was I just asking questions about it?
Say that again?
I think I was just asking questions about the PHA.
Yeah, it's a state program. It is an eviction prevention program. They have, I believe, three staff associated with this program. And the extreme concern is that without being able to secure the funds, then they would not be able to retain the staff. The county has provided, I believe, $100,000 towards the amount needed. And that is why it's 162, because the original ask was for 260.
Okay. And, so the reason why they're separated, just to clarify, is the top half needs to happen in order for the bottom half to happen.
And because I am who I am. Because I said, tell me what you absolutely have to have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 that's good. That makes sense. But just to clarify that we can say we only support one or we support both.
Right. They, I mean, Sunshine made it clear that if he only got the 50,000 in cash assistance, it would not, it would not help him save the individuals and that's what he was prioritizing.
Okay, I mean.
So I gave him that, I gave him that horrible choice, yes.
Yeah, I, I support those as well.
Both of those?
Yeah. Because what, I mean, the staff would have other things to do without the 50,000, right?
I think he has other funding. There would just be a reduction in what's available and he would have to continue his efforts to figure that out.
But the, the goal would be basically they could replace that 50,000 from sources outside the city.
And because it's smaller. Yeah.
Right.
I mean, if, I'm, I guess I can be flexible on that, but yeah. Happy to support the first one.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Taking notes for once. My turn. Lloyd, I'm sorry.
So the, the question that I've got about BRAC and PHA is trying to, I mean, we, we sometimes talk about a continuum of care or a, I like to think of it as an ecosystem for dealing with homelessness and affordable housing. And I guess the way things come to us at this stage, right now, over the last couple of weeks, is sort of disjointed. And I don't have a sense of sort of what the overall state of that continuum is and how which of these things are, are most necessary to keep things continuous on the continuum.
So I would say to you, this is about the continuum. This $250,000 is one of their core grants for permanent supportive housing services that they actually provide. The way it was explained is that this would cause an interruption of service. So there is no, there's no question that we would lose how they are doing their work. We would lose some component of how they do their work for a six-month period without replacing the funds is how it has been expressed to me. As it relates to the overall continuum, I wouldn't say is disjointed because I think what we're trying to do is plug gaps. That's probably a better way to look at it if I had to help you really think about where we are. You've heard me talk about BRAC separate from this in that I recognize a need for capacity. There's an additional need for the organization to be able to do more as it works to help those who find themselves unhoused. And because we've been in the conversation about the shelter needs, that is why it's became very evident to me that that is an opportunity for council to invest and make a difference. So I think we're trying to evolve and catch up is probably really where we are. But in this particular moment, this would not have been something anybody would have planned to be a part of the BRAC question and conversation. Ms. Washington has been excited that I actually indicated I was going to express interest in supporting their capacity needs and then this happened. So this was spontaneous. This was not something that they felt like they could predict.
My, my concern is that we, we do so many, we have so many different, so many different fingers in the dyke. And how many hands can you have to do it all?
This is your leader of that effort. I'll, I'll just say that. The continuum leader is BRAC. So they're the ones that's supposed to say, put your finger here.
But this, this particular grant, I mean, this is a, this is not a support BRAC generally. It's a support BRAC and a particular supporter of housing.
So that they can provide the funding to the organizations that are doing the work. Yeah. Though the, the recommendation that I've made to you separately in the budget is about BRAC staffing capacity. Definitely different.
Were you going to add something, Michael?
I was just going to say, I think, you know, there's obviously like a, with homelessness, like a federal continuum of care that we are a part of. I assume BRAC, well, I know BRAC is a part of that, like federal continuum of care.
Right.
So does this grant relate directly in terms of their ability to participate in just that, like technically defined federal continuum of care?
Ms. Marshall?
I don't believe so because I, I think my understanding is permanent supportive housing, which is just a program. But I'll let Ashley make sure I don't go off the rails.
Yeah, I think it's 34 people, 34 that permanent, you know, really difficult individuals.
That receive assistance.
Yes.
Yes, this is part of a grant that does come from the federal government but is intended to support permanent supportive housing through our continuum of care. BRAC is the individual who applies and receives those funds and then distributes them to our partners here in the community that are working and providing that housing. This funding is not something that would keep them from being considered a HUD continuum of care. But by being a continuum of care, they get to apply for funds like this. And there was simply an error in their application processes, also with the crossover of staffing. Just things happened with the grant. And so what this funding will help them do is to support the gap. So they did receive some of that grant funding, but simply not all of what they intended to ask for because there was something with the grant portal itself that caused some errors in the submission. So wasn't necessarily human error other than the coding. And so once they decided to award what they award from personal experience, even if they did make an error, there's kind of no going back by that point because they've taken all the money, sent it to all of the people and you're kind of unfortunately stuck. So this will just ensure we're able to provide the same level of permanent supportive housing that we have been for several years.
Thank you.
And then the other question I had is about the Dogwood Veterans Memorial. They, do I understand they have been asking for $500,000 a year for two years?
No, not asking. They've been asking for more for longer. Let me just be honest.
I'm looking at this.
Yes. Here, what we did was we all received communication from them recently. And in the communication, it identifies that the desire would be $500,000 for two consecutive years in the CIP. So that's why I recorded that as an off-cycle request.
If I could interject really, really quickly. So this is really like a conversation that we need to have more broadly about the Dogwood. I think this is fair to say, Sam, that from your perspective, you've been saying, this is what I need from you to be able to then go and put a well-thought-out, intelligently crafted ask in the CIP. And for whatever reason, you don't feel like you've gotten that yet. But we're continuing to have those conversations. Senator Deeds was able to locate $600,000 from, from the state. And so there's, I think, anxiety on the part of that group that we have that money from the state, but there's been no matching contribution from the city or the county. And I think the city and, and the county would, would like to partner with that. I think in addition to the fact that it's the Dogwood, you know, the hill that heals, which is important, it's also an ADA access pedestrian component that should have been addressed really when they did this work with, I guess, when they did the John Warner Parkway.
Right.
So it's, it's a real need. It's lingering. But because of all the various parties that are involved, I think it's been difficult for us to really figure out the best path forward. So I'm going to keep working with, with Sam. Hopefully we can, we can help that, that group help us so we can help them. I suggested, I was the one who suggested putting a marker of $100,000 in the, in the CIP really to, to demonstrate good faith in that we've not given up on this project and that we'd like to see it, some real progress happen soon because this is something that's been deferred and delayed. Nobody's fault in the city, but.
Don't we also have to coordinate with the county? Don't we also have to coordinate with the county as well? And I know you're talking to Jeff.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a desire to do that. That was always going to come. Once we got to a place of knowing that we had the, the packet which forms the program, the program being the construction project, we would put that out. We went through the process. Council adopted what is called a PPEA. It's a process. It's a bid process. And we need to do that. We still need to do that. We don't have what we need in order to make that happen. Once we get that out, we get responses, we'll know how much it truly costs to build a pedestrian bridge and the parking lot. And from there, I believe both the city and county would, the county executive and the city manager would welcome bringing a recommendation with that level of detail. My moment at this point is, I don't know what to ask you for, because I don't know how much it's gonna cost, because at this moment, all I know is conceptually what it is. So that's not me. I, I won't bring you an ask, so.
But a hundred thousand dollars could potentially go towards, like, if there are additional studies that are needed, or
Could.
engineering investigations, site surveys, things that would be basically force multipliers for getting this larger initiative done. I feel like my view is there needs to be a little bit of investment upfront on our side to help them, you know, to help this group figure out exactly what they need and how much it's gonna cost. And also to, to assist them so that they can go out and do more fundraising on their own. So that's why I suggested, in my work experience, having a little bit of seed money, you wanna call it that, I think could go a long way. Because I love, I feel like we've, you know, going around in circles about this for a number of years, no fault of ours. But whatever we can do to say, this is the project, this is the cost, and let's come up with a plan.
At one point, I, I thought I remembered that we were being asked to just put something in the CIP, even if it's a couple of years out, as this marker, if you will, or an indication of the city's interest in the project. Which, I mean, I, I remember many years ago, we always used to stick things in the fifth year. And so you would have ten million dollars, fifteen million dollars, fifteen million dollars, fifteen million dollars, four hundred million dollars in the fifth year. And everybody knew that just because it was there didn't mean it was ever gonna see the light of day.
That's right.
And fortunately, I think we've gotten away from that.
We have, absolutely.
And, and I'm not sure that I really want to go back to those days, even a little bit of, of it, but I, I.
I would just encourage us to see it as seed money, to help this group figure out a way to actualize something that this community's talked about for a long time. And I think that there's going to be a need on the part of the city, and if the county doesn't have it in their CIP right now, some help to just get this thing off the ground. I don't, while I appreciate Sam's perspective about, show me what the project is, they're, they're gonna need our help to formulate that, so.
Well, and.
And a hundred thousand dollars is, in the grand scheme, is a lot of money. I get that. But for this effort in, for the fact that we've got a six hundred thousand dollar grant from the state, it will probably end up getting money from the county. It just feels like a thoughtful way to move this forward. I feel like if we don't do this, we're gonna be here a year from now having the very same conversation.
And I, my, my thinking on it was in part that, that feels like a capital expenditure rather than a program expenditure. And I note that the council-directed funding opportunity is funded in part by a hundred thousand dollars of available CIP unspent balance. And I, I'm kind of.
Are you suggesting putting, paying for that from a different source?
Well, basically, to, to recognize that out of the million dollars that we've just been given authority over, a hundred thousand of it came from CIP anyway. And so to have a hundred thousand of that amount of money going to a CIP project doesn't disturb the balance in the universe. But the other, I guess, the other thing I wanted to mention just briefly is that, Sam, you had suggested that, for one thing, we may want to make sure that we not allocate all of that million dollars, at least not right now. Number one, because we may get something else that comes up three months from now, or six months from now, that we don't have any way of anticipating right now. And the second is because, you know, the part of this is, is an amount of some three hundred thousand dollars that was carried over, you know, from a prior year. And there is sort of a virtue, I think, to, to not spending everything you could possibly spend. Which may, and I, as I'm looking at the things that I think have a fair amount of support, when we look at BRAC, we look at the, let's say, both of the PHA projects, now you're talking about almost five hundred thousand dollars. If we put a hundred thousand dollars in, into the capital fund for the, the Dogwood Veterans Memorial, that's six hundred thousand dollars we've now allocated more than half. And that.
Well, take fifty then. Some, something, I guess.
Well, no, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying, between five fifty and six hundred isn't, isn't a problem.
I guess my point is, and this is maybe something we can talk about individually, but I, I really appreciate the notion of, show me the project, and then I know what's gonna go, you know, what to go to council for.
Yeah.
I think in this case, they are going to need some help defining that. And if we need cash to help them do that, if we have to invest fifty or a hundred thousand dollars, that will then unlock half a million dollars in donations. To me, I don't want to see, to me, that, it doesn't make sense to let that happen.
I wonder if, you know, one approach could be, whether it's fifty, a hundred thousand dollars. You know, the more fun of identifying, you know, something offsetting to cut in the budget, both for these or, you know, other ones. You know, one that jumps out to me is in the CIP, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to begin a study on expanding the parking lot at River View Park. Not the riverbank restoration. But I wonder if, if that is something that is, that is cut, that provides, you know, a little bit more capacity to either invest in with Dogwood or, or, you know, or other priorities as well.
I think that the percentages that we're talking about relative to the total capital budget are so small that if we're trying to think about funding a whole city and the projects that are coming along, making an investment of fifty or a hundred thousand dollars, and not, I, I don't, I would disagree with pitting it against another thing. To me, this is a standalone item that has merit, that's been talked about, that has a whole range of ADA. It touches our veterans and so forth. Yeah, well, that's all I'm gonna say.
And let me say, I, I've been somewhat, I'm not gonna say a rabid supporter, but, and I, I feel some, some sense of commitment to the folks with the Dogwood Veterans Memorial. I think they've, first of all, they've raised a lot of money on their own, and we expect them to raise more money on their own. So this is not merely a matter of they're coming to the city and saying, we have a two million dollar project, raise two million dollar check.
Yep.
Just sort of thinking about the way that I'm, I'm thinking right now, the, the things that have been highlighted are all things that I could, I could get behind. And so that's, that's where I'm thinking. One question, I assume that because we've got eighty-six thousand dollars coming in as a CDBG balance, that we have to make sure that at least eighty-six thousand dollars gets spent in a CDBG compliant manner?
Yep, I will do that for you.
But that both BRAC and PHA projects would qualify?
Possibly, yes. That's why I'm trying to whittle down the list.
Yeah, okay.
And then, of course, of the million we have to spend, this is just talking about these off-cycle ones. We also submitted adjustments for VCF. So maybe we circle back on this one.
There's more.
Yeah, let's come back to.
To be, to be clear, when I was talking about the park, I don't want to pin it against any individual project. I'm just thinking about both these and then also VCF, just in totality.
I see.
Lloyd, are you done, sir?
I'm done, yeah.
So just, I want to make sure I'm hearing, because I'm looking for clarity. Counsel Snook, you're saying that you could support all four of these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would support all four of these as well. What I would say, though, is I am not convinced or committed that having a number in the CIP is a magical thing. And I really respect, Sam, your perspective that let's only put things out there that we feel are credible and ready to move forward. So I don't, I don't know if my strategy of, let's dump a hundred thousand dollars in the CIP makes the most sense. But I do feel like we are going to have to help actualize this, and it's gonna take some investment. Maybe you've got some mad money over in Department of, you know, DPW. I don't know. But in lieu of that, in lieu of some other way of assisting, I would vote for this.
My comments are, is that I support the, the Dogwood, you know, at the hundred thousand or fifty thousand dollar level. I would like to see a program, you know, maybe not get the whole eighty, but maybe forty, twenty-five, thirty or something. The Scott, Charlotte, Charlottesville Scholarship Program, maybe something to start off, maybe forty to fifty thousand dollars for that. I do support the, the ones highlighted. And if, if the PHA, if you can do the whole fifty, I would be supportive of twenty-five.
Would you, are you all revising what you're supporting? Because I only picked, I picked up two things from Counsel Payne, BRAC and PHA, and Counsel Oshring, BRAC and both PHA. Are you?
Keeping the, the hundred thou, or the one million in mind, I kind of want to talk about the other ones first, and then think about it as a whole before I revise this slide.
All right, next slide. It doesn't get any easier. So.
Do we have, like, a running tally somewhere?
Nope. It's already too much. I can tell you that now. So that means I have work to do. And Ms. Hamel is already thinking. I won't be sleeping for another few more days.
We'll have a running tally on the tenth.
Yes, we will have that on the tenth. So this list is the result of the requests that I made to you all to take a look at the Vibrant Community Fund, and to identify where you had a desire to do something else. The desire that I had was, of course, that you would not desire to change and move things around, because I don't think we needed to do that, hence having the available funds. But to identify which of our awardees, with, based on the current recommendations, would you like to add to the amounts that were recommended to you? As well as which organizations would you like to add to the list for consideration? Meaning that you would be open to designating funds out of this discretionary pot. And this is the list that you gave me. The two at the top that are highlighted are the two that came from more than one of you. Everything else on the list came from one of you. And you know what that does to me. I get no clarity when one person says it, because I need three of you to say it. So this is the list that we now need you to work through and determine what is it we're gonna do. And you see blanks in front of all of them, because you all successfully passed the test with not a good grade, because no one told me how much exactly you wanted to give to any of the groups that you identified. So therefore, we need to identify how much money per line we're talking about, so that I can figure out how to come up with it.
I said same as last year for two of them.
So, and we went back and we tried to find that and make sure that we had it there, and we can live with that. But this is where we are. These are the, these are the organizations on the list that you all indicated that you wanted to do something in addition to the recommendation. So it, and you know there's a part two to this. You put numbers here, and then the part two is, you just heard from a group of people, if they're not on this list, that calls you to rethink. Because I need to know the list as quickly as possible if we're gonna finish this process.
Brian?
Yeah, I, like I wrote in my email, I support the recommendations of the VCF funding, the recommendations from the VCF committee. I certainly appreciate and respect the folks who've lobbied, or not lobbied perhaps, but who've brought forward their case for why they need more, or why they shouldn't have been, should, should receive more money. But I, at this point, I want to, to stick with what the VCF recommendations are. So I don't, I don't think for me, Sam, that you're gonna get a lot of, you know, back and forth on this one.
And I, I just want to say something to that, which is I totally get that. They did a great process. They had a lot of people working and supporting them. They were also operating under the financial constraints that they had at the time, and now we have new money. So I think it's not, I think it's possible that we can applaud them for their efforts and trust them. But also now we have stuff that we can adjust that they didn't have to play with, so.
What money do we have?
The million that we're sending.
Oh, okay. We didn't add anything else to the VCF.
But isn't that money we can apply to this?
That's right. That's, that's the point.
We could also take money out of the fire department budget, too, if we wanted to.
Well, yes, but in this particular scenario, we've been given a million dollars to redistribute how we want. And that's money that the VCF team didn't have when they first allocated these funds. So that's why I'm comfortable adding some to some of these, because that was money that they didn't have. So they still did a great job, and we can send a couple more thousand dollars here and there.
Okay. So do you want to identify those, of course?
So, yeah, I think that we can kind of go down the list, because, I mean, most of them came from me. But, um, but you can identify the ones that.
Well, I think the, the green ones are highlighted, because that came from both of us.
Yeah. So do you have any other?
Do we have a third, a third?
So let's, let me help. So Boys and Girls Club, the suggestion was to get closer to last year, which was a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. What is recommended this year is seventy-two thousand, eight fifty. Do you want to go to one sixteen, or anywhere in between? That's really what we're looking for, because we do need the specifics at this point, so that we can run a tab for you and come back to you with anything else.
So it'd be another forty-six.
I'll just, as I said in my email, I'm not, I, I agree with Brian. I'm not interested in, in revisiting VCF in part because they've got a whole lot more information than I will ever have on any of this. And I just, I, I don't know how, for example, to say a thousand bucks more here versus two thousand bucks more there. And I just don't think it's a profitable use of our time to, to try to jump back into that. So at least for me, it's gonna be a zero on all of them.
Okay. That's helpful. I mean, that means I only have three people I need to hear from then.
I mean, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to discuss in the, in the, I think it would, I would be more open to maybe adjusting some of them if we were identifying some things that we would be open to cutting in the budget, instead of it just all coming from the million. I will say, I think, you know, looking at the million, and I think that it, it is smart to try to hold on to a reasonable amount of it, just given the uncertainty. And of course, we always know that throughout the year after the budget's adopted, things come up, and more things than ever are gonna come up, since a lot of nonprofits are going to lose what they used to consider safe foundational funding sources at the federal level. So I'm open to, you know, some adjustments of, you know, tens of thousands here and there, like if it can be shown reasonably that there's a strong operational impact from, you know, twenty thousand dollars, you know, wasn't, you know, invested in this program. For these and others, you know, my prioritization is kind of how do we triage organizations that providing frontline direct services, which I think is gonna be the greatest need. So, you know, of these, of these listed, kind of Bridgeline, Boys and Girls Club, jump up to me as perhaps some of the largest priorities, if there is an operational impact from, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars additionally being invested. Again, you know, if it helps them operationally and it's ten thousand dollars, I don't have a problem with that with Lighthouse. So at this point, maybe, I don't, I don't know the amount, but Bridgeline, Boys and, Boys and Girls Club, Lighthouse, you know, maybe others, but I think it would be helpful, you know, if, if maybe we, we cut something from somewhere else as well, to give us a little bit more leeway. I don't know if that provides you any clarity.
And I think what we've heard today from the speakers is helpful, and it's also feedback that isn't new. The fact that activities are good for teens and kids, and supportive care, and preemptive activities are how you can take care of people to divert them from other paths that might end up being detrimental and. other paths that might end up being detrimental and more expensive. So like you said, kind of operational frontline services, I think Boys and Girls Club definitely counts as that. Lighthouse counts as that. It provides several programs. They, they gave a presentation last year that showed the diversity of their students, which I think was good. And then, that's why I added Piedmont Casa and the Sexual Assault Research Agency and Legal Aid Justice Center and Live Arts for those kind of same reasons. There are activities and services that are good for the community and probably have an outsized effect.
So are you limiting yourself now to the list you just read off, that that's where you're wanting to put as your priority?
Those are the ones I initially had submitted.
Could I ask one, could I ask maybe a different way? So first of all, I, first of all, in general, and I think Michael has made this point very eloquently a number of times, we can, and you made it just a second ago, Counselor Oshring, we can honor this VCF process and we can, you know, respect their work and still also make some tweaks around the edges. I also appreciate where Lloyd is coming from, you know, who are read as sort of way in at the last minute. It does feel like we're putting, on the other hand, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, if my fellow colleagues feel really strongly about something, you can make a pitch, I'm not saying try to convince me, but just explain why you think it's worthwhile. I might reconsider for some specific items, because I want to be, you know, respectful of y'all's, you know, your advocacy. But, yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to say. I wonder if it would help if we said for these items, these puts and takes that we have here, what is our overall budget? Are we willing to take a hundred thousand dollars in that sort of our overall budget for this, of the puts and takes, or versus, you know, going, or fifty thousand? I don't know, versus going each one and arguing about? If that makes any sense.
Yeah, I'll just chime in as, you know, a couple of things is that, you know, we comment as counselors on projects and things that staff and others have way more information than we do, and we, we as council, we have the final say. That's why they elect us. And so, you know, we, you know, we, we always comment on, on things where staff or outside agencies, whatever, provide comments or input. We, you know, we have the final say, because we're on the city council. So I, I do respect that, because as I said before, I've been on the other end, but I fully expect it, you know, that, that it will be changed, because this is a very engaged community. And that's how, that's how, that's how we roll, so. And, and I would say that, you know, a lot of these I used to be on the board of, but many of them, not on, I was not on their board, and I know the important work that they do in the, in the community. They allow us to really extend our impact, extend our reach, our, you know, what we can do in the community. So, and, you know, I'm always supportive of those programs, as a young lady says, that, that impact the youth in the community. So anyway, so, but I also can count to, to three. So I'm supportive of the ones that I sent in and-
Can you restate it, or can you say some of these?
I, I don't, I don't need you to do that.
You need numbers.
Let's not do that. I don't need that. What I'm trying to do, honestly, is by giving you each the opportunity to identify where your priority lies, we're building a list, then you collectively as a group are telling me which one of those rise to the top. That is weeding it out. That's what I'm looking to do.
And part-
We don't need to, we don't have to, don't worry about how much we're spending, because we may come back to you and say, we figured that out. At this moment, my desire is to make lists shorter. That's the desired outcome. And then we will figure out what the numbers have to be, because you will have to move those pieces around, especially by not necessarily knowing what to say in regards to, so how much for this specific group?
How much on the last slide have we already-
What you identified was five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
Yes.
I just did that.
Yeah.
That's why I said you've already done it.
Yeah. So a lot of the ones that I tried to pick were kind of smaller amounts, like the difference for Piedmont Casa was twelve hundred dollars. I feel like that is like, we can do that, and fully funds their request. And Loaves and Fishes, they were six thousand dollars short out of fifty. That fully funds their request. I think those are kind of pretty easy yeses. The, there's some larger leaps where, like the Legal Aid Justice Center requested seventy, they were funded at thirty-two-nine. That's a bigger portion, so I don't know how, you know, do we just round up to thirty-five and that's as best we got? That's kind of why I didn't give specifics in my email, because you have the full picture and, and I don't-
Not on this. These are your decisions.
I mean, but we don't, we don't, okay, that's true. And I, I do appreciate Michael opening up the conversation about where to find more money for this if we wanted, and I kind of want to make two points. One, should we talk about next year increasing the VCF fund, so that this conversation isn't as long? Because they can just fund things in a little more depth?
That is considered every year.
Yeah.
That's, that's a decision that I make-
Or is that an induced demand sort of thing?
No, no, it's a decision that I make as a part of the process, of determining what we can try to make fit, and then we can hope that there are other resources, which is how we got to this point. Money was just available to bring this concept back to you.
Yeah.
We have not done it this way before.
And then the, the second point is, I agree that, and I was assuming this was going to come into something we would talk about, and you already kind of mentioned we were going to get more in-depth about the River View Parking Lot Study. Just at baseline principles about our goals, it strikes me as something that does not align with those principles, and I can go into more depth on that later and individually. But yeah, that is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that maybe we relocate somewhere else.
Yeah, and, and we're not looking to have you do that.
Right. So that's a larger, that's a different conversation.
Because that needs, that will be considered on its own, and that isn't necess, that's not an equal trade-off.
Different buckets.
That's not really what we're looking for you to do.
Yeah.
We can figure this out. Ultimately, we're just allowing you to exercise the itch that you've demonstrated that you have each year, where we have been reluctant to accept the Vibrant Community Fund recommendations in total. So to prevent it from being the other version, then the desire was to give you a chance to say, okay, so which ones would you like to give more to, and help determine how much more? That is really what we're trying to do.
Yeah, and so I-
The shorter the list, the better. I'll be honest and say that.
Great. I also suggested Live Arts to be the same as last year, because that was a little over five grand more. And, and then, and I think we all kind of had questions about Bridgeline, which seems to be-
And I'll talk to you about Bridgeline specifically. We do have good news for them, so don't consider Bridgeline.
Don't consider Bridgeline.
I'll tell you about that in just a second.
Great. So yeah, then I would say, to reiterate, Loaves and Fishes, check, fully fund for fifty. Live Arts up to last year, Piedmont Casa, fully fund. And then for the Sexual Assault Resource Agency and the Legal Aid Justice Center, I would like to do a reasonable amount more, whatever we would like to deem as reasonable, if that's rounding the Sexual Assault Resource Agency up to thirty, and Legal Aid Justice to thirty-five. If everyone's comfortable with that, great.
Yes, I will support Natalie's recommendations.
And that's it for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you restate what you're-
I'll say. I got them. Boys and Girls Club, Lighthouse, Live Arts, LAJC, Piedmont Casa, Loaves and Fishes, and Sarah.
What's that total?
I don't know that we have that total. We're, we're not going to look at it like that. We're, I'm already processing, we'll figure something out. You can expect, you'll get a new slide, and it'll have everything on it, and it'll have a total on it, and then you'll be able to say, nope, that doesn't work, and you can make changes that way. I think that's where we are. Now, good news for Bridgeline. Because your inquiries caused me to question, we were able to go back into our process and we discovered that an error was made on their line item. Thankfully, just their line item, so I apologize. Our team was able to discover that there was an error in the spreadsheet. Their rating did suggest something was awkward, so in going back in, we were able to, and I don't, I lost my number. Do you have it? Yeah, there were, I have it right here. We're adding thirty-seven thousand, forty dollars to the nineteen thousand, seven, four, seven hundred and forty dollars that were funded, to make that the actual recommendation. And that does not come out of your million dollars. We think we can figure out how to cover that, because it was a computing error on our part.
So what was their total, their new total?
Nineteen and thirty-seven.
Nineteen, seven, forty plus thirty-seven thousand, forty.
Okay.
That will be their new, the new total.
Six, seven?
Yes.
Which is, is good to hear and speaks, I legitimately think it's a very good process, but it's a good reminder, it's not perfect.
Correct.
Mistakes, and also any review committee is not omniscient.
Sure. I mean, and we did, and because, because that, because of that double check, the entire list was checked, so to assure everyone, there are no other errors. Don't tell me we made other mistakes. There are no other errors. It was just this one, thankfully. And we do apologize for that mistake, and we'll make sure that we check them fully.
So Natalie, you ran the numbers, right?
Right. I just added up the suggestions that I just had, and if I got them all, it was twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. That seems-
Okay, we'll make that note.
Do.
All right, next slide.
That didn't include Boys and Girls Club and Lighthouse, that was just the other ones.
Yep, because those are the bigger ones. This is one item on this list, thankfully. There was a request to consider increasing funding to Region Ten. Region Ten was funded at their full ask, so there was no number identified. We don't have a recommendation further, because we funded the full ask. If that is something of interest for discussion, we, that's why it's here. So the question is, is that something you want us to consider in this mix or not?
Yeah, I, I was the one who asked about that. Does there, have they increased their, is there some formula or something every year that increases by a certain amount? Or do they just come to you? Or it seems like the number's not ever changed much.
It has actually not changed for multiple years. Part of it is prescribed from the state, but the other part are several separate programs that council has funded, and they have not requested additional funding for those programs.
Because when I was on the board at Region Ten, I thought there was some mix of the, the ten parts of the region that every year was funded, mostly I guess for their operations, maybe? I don't know, but I would just be interested, we don't have to, I'm not advocating for increasing by some random number. But it is something that I think I would ask staff, perhaps Ms. Marshall would be the right one, to really say, what is your funding model? Are you getting the money that you need? Because every time we turn around, we're saying Region Ten will do this for us, Region Ten will do that for us. And again, I don't have any sort of outside information on this, but-
Right, and I, I think that I know in the past, Michael, you and Lloyd may have more history on this, is that we gave them more money than they could use. It was some money that for, I forgot the program, but it wasn't matched or something. Yeah, in, in any event, we, it's, you know, mental health is, is a big issue, and, and if they didn't, you know, didn't request more, because they, maybe they felt like they couldn't hire more, then I know it's right now, it's really difficult, because they have great counselors, and they get training, and then they, you know, get, you know, their own counseling service or, or move on. And it's hard for them to, to keep counselors. That's been my understanding of it.
Yeah, just consider this a request on my part, to have staff do a little more of a deeper dive with the, the executive director and the board chair over there, and maybe just revisit funding models, and if they really think they've got what they need, then that's great. But I want to be proactive in that, because they, they are an essential part of everything that we do. So, anyway.
And I-
No changes.
Yeah. Well, I, I think I agree with that perspective, and that, and I think it's already been a priority of staff, but just, yeah, I mean, somehow really having conversations with their staff and trying to figure out, you know, how can we have the strongest relationship going forward? I think there's a lot of opportunities there, but I think I also agree that it sounds like there's no need to like, adjust it right now in this budget cycle.
Right.
And I will, I heard about it today, so I'll make, it's not quite the same, but I'll make this a little worse in terms of, I heard, I got reached out to about a request in terms of CRHA making an argument that their funding for resident services not being submitted last year would necessitate cutting staff positions in that office. And that was their number one concern. They weren't too concerned about the eviction program or the Dogwood funding not being funded, but that, they were most concerned in terms of having an operational impact. I'm not even sure what that delta is between what they got last year and this year, but could find it, but we'll, we'll throw that out, that I was reached out to about that.
Is that a request to consider?
I think, I think it'd be worth considering.
Okay. All right, that's it for what I just took you through. We'll get it together. You'll get something from me before Friday, which is tomorrow.
So before tomorrow?
Oh, I forgot, there's another slide, sorry.
Not so quick.
It's hard to do this job. All right, so there were additional indications, so I forgot, we needed to work through these and make sure we process them and prioritize, and at least consider them. Prioritizing the downtown mall improvements, that came across loud and clear, because more than one of you indicated an interest in knowing that the downtown mall is being planned for in the way of investment. We have identified for you three different line items that are in the CIP right now, total over a million dollars that are meant for deployment in this coming fiscal year, the rest of this year plus next fiscal year. The things that we're going to be doing, of course, are things that are about maintaining the mall. The goal would be to try to expend, you'll see that there's seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in the downtown mall infrastructure improvements. We added most of that, if not all of that, in a fiscal year in twenty, in twenty-five. And the goal is to make sure that we can get the projects going to spend that money. It is a variety of safety items, so it is about bricks that would be a part of any concerns that we have out there, some, some light paving areas where we know that concrete has cracked. And then there's also funds that we've had in the CIP for a while, labeled pedestrian lighting. Now, this gives us an ability for us to deploy some funds and begin to work on adding lighting to the mall. That is a priority that we know has been basically going on for a long time. We didn't add new money this year, because we have that in, in the budget at this time. However, Deputy Friesen and I have talked about what is on his list of requests for me to consider for surplus. And I do have categories of the surplus. I am not trying to avoid you all's interest in what am I thinking about the surplus, but I'm trying to keep you focused on this and not that, because we'll get there. I am concerned that all of it won't be available for the things that I've categorized, because of what's going on in our political climate right now. But the additional downtown mall investments are on the list. Emergency management is on the list. We have some internal critical costs that our budget director is stacking up in a very high manner, that will take a big chunk of the money. And then the goal, of course, is to try to hold on to as much of this money as possible to get us through whatever this wave is going to continue to be, that we're waiting to find out the impacts of proposed changes in VC. So that's, again, a chance to see what I'm thinking, but I'm not giving specifics, but decisions yet, because I don't know that most of them are going to actually come through. We are hearing from people more and more, we are tracking all these federal things ourselves, and I'm concerned. So that's, that's really where it's coming from. So downtown mall prioritization, I'm saying to you right now, that is it. I have a desire to ask you for more out of the surplus allocation. I'm not bringing that yet, but it is on the list. So I'm just trying to satisfy the interest, the curiosity of is it being prioritized?
So are these, are these three items on that list already in your draft CIP?
This is in the CIP today.
Okay.
Yes. So these are funds committed. This is not even tied to this budget. They were in last year's budget.
Okay.
Yeah. Significant contribution to the Tom Tom Festival, we are again sponsoring the Block Party, that's a twenty thousand dollar commitment from the city. that's a twenty thousand dollar commitment from the city. Uh, the Office of Economic Development has contributed five thousand dollars for the Wednesday Conference, uh, that's titled Evolve. And I am looking at possibly uh expanding the support, uh, and we're working through that right now. We have, um, the Special Events Committee is looking at what the other costs are, and one of the considerations is to absorb the cost of police to support the event and make that a city expense in support of the event happening. So that would be the significant contribution that I would support or I would identify for you. Uh, prioritize funding for the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary for next summer. There is no money uh budgeted at this time, this too is on the list of surplus considerations, so this would be one of those line items that I would ask you to use funds for, um, to make that happen. I'll say that we are working as a team, we actually have multiple conversations going internal and external uh to identify what would the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary event in conjunction with the fiftieth anniversary of the downtown mall, because they happen at the same time next summer, what would that be, what could that be, therefore what could that require in the way of money? So we don't have a budget identified yet, um, but I will have a budget by the time I come to you with the surplus, as you might expect. I will say that we are interested in two of you joining this conversation so that we do have council's perspective plugged in as we begin to prioritize what the event could be locally. Um, so if anyone is interested, I'll take a hand.
You say?
I'll take a hand, two p, two hands, okay. All right, got it. So we'll invite you to the next meeting, uh, as we begin to work through the various things that we've been thinking about and been hearing and look to hear from you as well. Uh, there's a recommendation to consider removing the Frelin Museum forty-two hundred dollars and redistribute that to the arts and culture organizations or give to the Discovery Museum. That's there for you to consider, that's up to you. Uh, just need three of you to say that's what you want to do, otherwise we leave it there and move on. Uh, and then the last item was just to remind you all that there was, I made the recommendation that you would try to reserve half of the million dollars to have available for you in twenty-six, and actually in FY twenty-six, since we are still in twenty-five, but yeah, talking about next year a lot. But that would mean that you would not be um funding most of what you just said you wanted to fund, so sadly, that is where we are.
As I total it, we're less than six hundred K, so that's sixty percent of a million.
No, uh, you can't be if we go, because the number that Council Austin gave did not include the two bigger ones.
The, the Boys and Girls Club and the Lighthouse, yeah.
Which those are probably, I think that would be another seventy or so. So it, it, it's a little more, it's still, you're still money left, um, that's not my charge, that's yours.
Let's say we're three-quarters, perhaps, as opposed to fifty percent.
Yes.
Um, so I, I'm the one who suggested the Frelin adjustment, just based on what we all agreed and talked about last season, and then I saw in the arts and culture slide that you had given us, a lot of those were, were not fully funded by like a smidge, and so this redistribution would be able to fill those up to, at, to the requested amount.
Oh, that's what you meant?
Yeah.
I didn't know what you meant on the arts and culture, I thought you were thinking, I thought you were suggesting arts and culture within VCF, not the events that I pulled out.
No, those.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
So you were recommending that the events be funded at a higher amount?
Well, I, like, some of them were like a sixty to fifty, like six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and you were like, here's a five thousand dollar fund, so it's like, you know, a little bit more to spread that out, but if everyone would have to agree to adjust that.
Uh, again, I'm not going to ask that you focus on taking something away to make it happen. Well, the question is, what do you really want to accomplish, and let me see if we can make that happen. So I, I think we'll, we'll just take that note and see what we can figure out for you.
Does anyone have any Frelin feelings?
I mean, I, I support the forty-two hundred dollars going to the Frelin.
Going to them.
Yeah, keeping it as is.
I'm, I'm fine to reallocate it, the amount of money obviously isn't that big and, you know, I don't want it to be personal, and then I think the Frelin Museum does do good things and good programming. I do just think it, it is, as a process, it is not appropriate for the University of Virginia to be submitting requests to us through environmental community funds, I just, doesn't seem appropriate. I know they weren't funded, but, you know, it was just like, why did the Board of Visitors submit requests for substantial funding to plant tulips? I just, you know, process-wise, I don't get it.
And this, this is, we had this exact same discussion last year too, so, and we agreed to remove the Frelin funding and reallocate it, so this is just kind of part two of that.
Others?
Lloyd and...
Well, I, I kind of share some of Michael's thoughts. You know, we end up having arguments with the university about how we support very, how we support things they do or they support things that we do or vice versa. I don't know, I, I guess forty-two hundred dollars isn't a lot of money, but I think I probably more agree with Michael.
Okay.
So there's three?
Great, I don't have to commit publicly.
You go to work.
I think, yeah, yeah, that's good. I do think the point that Michael makes is well-framed. It just feels a little petty and, you know, I, places, university's big enough where for the Frelin Museum of Art, this is a really good opportunity for them to get forty-two hundred dollars, and it's a way that connects them to the rest of the community, and um we're trying to be good partners with them, we want them to do things for us on bigger things, so forty-two hundred dollars, uh, I guess if I had to vote, I would say keep it, yeah.
Well, I, I would add, I said in my comments to Mr. Sanders, uh, by email, that if there was some sort of political reason why it seemed to be a worthwhile thing to be involved in trading off, I'm certainly not going to feel as a matter of principle that it shouldn't be done, but...
Yeah, I, um, I mean, from last year, you know, I dove a little bit deeper into Frelin, spent a good amount of time over there, and I've seen city kids visited them, and I know that the new director there is really making a concerted effort to, to be more inclusive. And I, I think when they move into the new space, it's really going to be nice. So I, I, I'm like everyone, I can count to three and, um, so, but um, um, forty-two hundred dollars is not going to make a, a big difference on either end, I'm supportive of it, um, and if we don't get another one, then...
I'm sup, yeah, I, I'm with you, I don't know, the third, but it would be, but...
Okay.
I think that's it for me.
So, so real quick, sorry.
Now the good part.
Before we get into debt service, um, I, I said I...
Because that's exciting.
Well, I, I suggested that we circle back to the off-cycle request slide, once we talk through everything else, we could get an idea of where I stay on that.
Oh, yes.
And I, I maintain where I was before, top three, and, and I think...
Top three being...
If the placeholder can be spent elsewhere and actually get spent and do things, I think we should do that and not allocate it as a placeholder.
Wait, I'm sorry?
Yeah, using this as a placeholder when it could be spent.
Uh-huh. So you're...
I'm, I, I'm supporting these three.
Okay.
And not that one.
So BRAC, PHA, one and two.
Yes, please.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Sam, for my segue. I know you guys are excited enough.
So excited.
Uh, so as we're going to talk about uh CIP next week, we wanted to take just a few minutes to um talk about debt service. We normally talk about that on the same night, we wanted to provide you with some more room to talk uh more about the CIP, so we're going to do it um tonight. So just a couple of things on the city's debt profile. Um, at the end of this fiscal year, um, that would be June, we'll have total outstanding debt of about a hundred and ninety-one million dollars. A hundred and thirty-nine million of that is general government debt, fifty-two million of that is self-supporting debt. And just as a, um, another point of interest about, if we were to issue no more debt, about seventy-three percent of this would be paid off within the next ten years. In the current fiscal year, our total debt service payment is uh seventeen point nine million dollars, which equates to just a little over seven percent of the FY twenty-five total general fund budget of two hundred and fifty-two million. Uh, in the proposed CIP that's in the twenty-six budget, we are um planning to uh issue another hundred and thirty-eight million dollars worth of debt over the next five years. So how do we manage this? Um, we manage this a couple of ways. One is through the debt service policy that um was established. This policy was actually changed uh back in twenty-seventeen. Uh, our debt service policy used to be that uh debt service would uh be no more than eight percent of the general fund budget. In anticipation of our increased CIP needs, uh, we worked with both the rating agencies and with council at the time, and we increased that uh to a ceiling of ten, uh, and the council at the time um imposed a target of nine percent. And so in looking at the chart on the left here, the, if you look from twenty-sixteen to twenty-twenty-four, um, you'll see that our annual debt service as compared to our general fund, we're hovering generally around the six percent in terms of our ratio. Um, and I would note that part of this is, um, as our general fund grows and continues to grow, so does our capacity to um issue more debt. And so what does that look like? And the, the chart on the right basically took a twenty-year look at the general fund. And you'll see that in these five-year increments, um, we've hovered right around four-ish percent in terms of the average growth. Some years have been higher, we've ranged everywhere from a twelve percent change in one year to an, a minus one percent change in another year. Um, the years that are highlighted in green actually represent years in which there was some sort of tax increase. Large, in tax increase would either be real estate, meals or lodging. Personal property was increased in uh the last year's budget, if you recall. If we were to, um, and these numbers reflect the total budget, but if we were to back out those tax increases, we're probably somewhere a little um less than these averages that you see here. And so how do we roll all this together? Basically, um, this is what we use as sort of our planning document for what is the impact of debt um going to be on our budget and how does that impact um our planning, basically? So if, take a look here, there's a lot of moving parts, there are a lot of numbers on this chart. Essentially, anything in black is a real number that has happened. Um, anything in blue is sort of our projection, that's kind of what's in our crystal ball at the moment. You'll see that the annual debt service um from twenty-sixteen to twenty-thirty-four is essentially being planned to triple, while at the same time, our general fund from twenty-sixteen to twenty-thirty-four is doubling.
Can you say that again, I don't do that tracking, those last two statements?
The annual debt service, which is the third column over from the right, if you go from nine to thirty million, that's basically tripling in this timeframe.
All right, where's nine, where's nine?
The annual debt service. Thank you.
Oh, from twenty-sixteen to twenty-thirty-four, okay, I was looking at twenty-forty-five, sorry.
And then at the same rate, the general fund at twenty-sixteen was a hundred and fifty-six million, and on this chart, which is assuming a three percent growth, um, is going to three-thirty-five, so essentially the general fund is doubling. And so um, one of the things that you'll note is that um this chart is simply meant to be a planning tool. It is not meant to be a starting place to say, oh my gosh, we got to take a look here because this is going to limit what we can do in the CIP. That's not the intent here. The intent here is to basically take what you have identified as the important parts of the CIP and to feed it backwards through this chart to make sure that, one, um, we are maintaining affordability and we are maintaining our policies um as we move forward. And so with that, I'll just segue that, here is a pie chart of the sort of uh functional breakdown of the proposed um CIP for twenty-six, not the five-year plan, but just for twenty-six. And so that is sort of what we'll be talking about next week, and we wanted to take this opportunity to say to you, we're going to have staff available. We have presented the proposed CIP on three different occasions, two time, one in a work session, one in a public hearing with Planning Commission. We presented it also in a public hearing with you all. Um, and so if there are additional things that you would like to take a deeper dive next week, if there are things you'd like to talk about moving around, um, we can also do that, and we'd welcome any feedback rather than just coming to you with slides you've already seen. And so however you would like to better use that time in that work session. I did want to make one point to you, because this happens a lot in our internal conversations, so as you were talking about the money for the agencies and how you move things around, and um, one of the examples was the Riverview um parking lot. Just keep in mind that every dollar in the CIP does, is not um necessarily a dollar, meaning that um if it is, it depends on how it's funded, right? So if we were going to fund something, for example, with bonds, and then you wanted to use that for an agency, that's not the same dollar. So um, it, it, it really is part of a puzzle that we've got to put in place. So with that, I'll be quiet, and we're looking for some input from you on how you'd like to use your time next week with the CIP.
Last part, what is the consequences of this?
So the consequences is basically, um, a couple of things going on there. Uh, also at the same time that we um increased our uh debt ratio, uh, we also were anticipating that our CIP was going to continue to grow, and we were going to have greater debt service needs. So we started putting money aside in the debt service fund. As you also know, um, the equivalent of one percent of the meals tax goes to the debt service fund, and it builds up a fund balance. And so the beauty of that is, or the intent of that, was that the, basically the cost to the general fund, while it would increase slowly over time, it was a, a gentle uh increase in the general fund instead of a, a big swing from year to year. As we continue to issue more debt, basically at a rate faster than we're paying it off, we're buying down that fund balance, you know, at whatever rate you choose, depending on how we plan the CIP, but it, it does then shift the cost um more to the general fund. So for example, if you look at the twenty-twenty-five year, the, the second column, the annual debt service, so as I mentioned earlier, our payment this year is seventeen point nine million dollars. You also, if you were to go to the general fund budget document, you would see that the general fund's only transferring in thirteen million dollars. Um, and so we basically drew down four million dollars in twenty-five of that debt service fund balance. The, 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 the planning part of this chart is that as we move further down and as we draw down that fund balance, then the general fund is then taking on full freight of the debt service fund. So for example, in thirty-thirty-four, the last year there, um, essentially we're budgeting twenty-nine million from the general fund to pay that debt service.
Okay. So when you start, you're coming up with more money to shift over to that or not?
I mean, it's, it's up to you, you may decide that your CIP is such that you're happy with allocating those dollars to debt service. Um, you know, it's all, it's sort of a, a zero-sum game. You know, the budget's balanced every year, so then every new dollar becomes a decision for how you want to allocate those. Debt is a fixed cost for twenty years essentially, so um it's not meant to be doom and gloom, it's just a realization.
So when you said, you know, you want some guidance for tomorrow, what, what do you, what do you...
If there are projects that you want more information on, if there are areas that you have more interest in discussing further, um...
Things that are, things that are in the CIP as you know them to be, if you'd like to hear more about them, things that we added, things that we've shared with you that we added to the CIP, if you'd like to know more about them, we would have the full team here to be able to go over those things.
Right, I mean, I can tell you, I don't have any like particular preference of projects, I just, I haven't really had time to focus on.
I mean, we'll, we'll hide, we will, we'll make some decisions and highlight some things for you, but we were just interested in hearing if there were any things that you were particularly... but we were just interested in hearing if there were any things that you were particularly interested in.
Lloyd, do you have any, you know, any?
Well, I mean, one thought I had was, we just heard on Monday about potentially millions of dollars of capital expenditures on parks and so on. And I, since having heard that, I have not gone back to other documents to see what's actually in the CIP at this point. But having this nice plan that gives us goals to shoot at, we ought to at least think about how serious we are about shooting at those goals.
Sure. Okay. That's on the list.
It feels like the school CIP is, is pretty tight right now and clean and well-agreed to as far as these things go.
Are you interested in, in hearing some of the projects? Is that what you're?
No, I'm just sort of reflecting out loud, but I feel like, you know, we've got the Walker in there. We beefed up a little bit on their annual drawdown that they can use for projects.
Yeah, we'll touch on the, on the drivers. We always do that. What are the categories that we spend the most in? We'll definitely cover those.
The point that people have made about, the point that people have made about having a, I don't know, a ten-year, fifteen-year outlook on growth in number of students? Do we need to expand some facilities? Those sorts of larger questions. I don't really have had a chance to even think about that. I know our focus has really been on getting the middle school done and getting Walker, but there are these larger conversations about essentially demographics, really, that I think we need to start talking about.
Yeah, and that is a separate conversation that I'm definitely working towards bringing to you. As we've talked about briefly, we may end up having a summer retreat, and that is one of the subjects, as well as, I've talked to the superintendent about you all having a joint meeting, not just budget focus, but also planning forecasting.
Natalie, did you have anything particular with the CIP you want them to?
Well, I know we definitely wanna talk about the Riverview Park project. Again, not the erosion prevention of it all, but the parking situation. But can I take a closer look and send you an email?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. I would like to drill down a little more. I, I did, Chrissy, you'll be happy to know, I looked it up in the Budget Explorer. But I still would like more to it. That's a quite brief overview. Thank you.
Michael, any particular projects or anything you want them to focus on?
Well, you would, like, I assume, like, a project like the Riverview Park parking lot, that's likely cash-funded since its first study, that would then make a recommendation about, like, debt finance, the actual infrastructure. So, but it would be the case that for anything that is cash-funded in the CIP, that would open up capacity in the general fund for kind of the things we've discussed tonight, correct? So, I'm particularly inter, sorry.
Well, can I just make one point there? So, there is a little bit of a fine line of the math there, because we have a policy that says we will contribute three percent PGO to the CIP. However, to your point, if there are cash projects that we've identified as cash, we just won't bond fund them to keep the three percent, but we're really close. So, if, for example, I think the three percent is like seven, eight, I don't remember the exact number, but we, we might not have, we might be out of policy compliance if we transfer any more cash back to the general fund, because we've cut it so slim. But we can, we can look at that, for sure.
Okay. And then, one of the questions would be, is it, is it about moving it out of the CIP so that you can get it back to the general fund, or is there a project? Is there something else? So, you could replace it with a project? So, that's even a question that I would be interested in hearing. Is it, is it about the cash, or is it about another project?
Yeah, I think, I mean, obviously, you know, it could be either. But my, my thought is, you know, in the context of the conversation tonight, it seems like the, I see the most immediate needs would be, like, cash in the general fund to fund the kind of things we saw tonight.
And we still owe you one update, because before, by the time we close, I mean, we're doing, we're doing revenue projections weekly now. So, we still owe you an update, and that is, that will be just before we close this thing. So, that's part of what we also know, and that's why I can speak to you about, we might be able to figure some things out.
Right. But yeah, I mean, in particular, I'm interested in the Riverview Park project, not just for the cash, but also, if that study's conducted, there'll be a recommendation, I would assume, for several million dollars in terms of the actual infrastructure improvement. And I do think it's worth us having a conversation about, is that a priority for us? Are we okay with the level of street parking in that area that is available? Being a way people can access it if the parking lot fills up? Quite frankly, I think there is, and I don't see that situation changing on, like, Riverview Avenue and other areas. But, so that's a big one, and, but I'll go through it again and see if there are other kind of smaller cash-funded projects that pop up. But that's kind of my first instinct is, is are there any kind of smaller cash-funded projects that aren't fully aligning with either council priorities or we would prioritize something else over them? But I don't really see, none of, like, the major projects stuck out to me as things that, like, I'm like, we need to, like, get rid of them or add in some substantial new project.
I think what I know I wanna be able to do is a part of the process, because this is, this is about you unpacking the budget, but it's also about the public being able to connect to the budget. We'll highlight in those big categories, what are the things that make up? So, for affordable housing being this big tranche of money that you have in your CIP, what are some of the highlighted projects that we can bring to your attention, just for the sake of the public being aware of what those are?
And I would also agree with Lloyd's point that I don't think there's any need for us to think about changing the CIP this year at all. But I think it would be useful to get, like, with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, what is the scale of that investment? And just so we have that on the table. And I know it's not CIP, but similarly, like, just what is the scale of the cost of different scenarios for expanding our transit system? And kind of just get it out in the open, you know? How much does it cost? What would it take? And what are we willing to do in terms of the timeline for getting there? But I know that's not CIP.
It's a little both.
Speaking of the Ravanna Project, I know everyone was in general agreement for the restoration and erosion protection, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Where is that listed?
It's not. It's funded by the Enterprise Fund. We were able to identify that we could make it fit into there as an eligible activity, so it's not in the CIP.
Right. It's, it's like talked about in the pros, but I couldn't find the line.
It's, it's gonna come out of the stormwater.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I just had one more. Michael touched on this. So, transit.
I knew somebody wasn't unloading that design. I'm prepared. I'm ready. You want me to give you a response to that?
You know, you saw the public tonight. In a couple of weeks, I guess, two of us will be going to the NEMI Impact Conference. Yeah. Whatever you're prepared to say tonight. And if there's anything that we, are there any decision points that we have?
Sure. I'll just say, it's reasonable to appreciate the recommendation to continue to add drivers to CAT. It is a priority. We have not shifted from that. That is not anywhere near what is happening at this time. But I do think it's important for you as the council and for the public to hear, just to appreciate that while we did not make an investment in additional drivers, you are making a significant increase in what it costs you for a transit service locally. You are absorbing more this fiscal, this budget year proposal, as is the county. Our local match went up six-hundred thousand dollars, and the counties went up eight-hundred thousand dollars. And that is because this is the first, this will be the first year that you will not have flexible federal funds really suppressing what the local match has been required to be. And that was due to COVID, being able to generate those funds. Those dollars are gone. So, this budget has no offset from the federal government in the flexible category that we've been able to enjoy for about four years now. In addition to that, we have absorbed these collective bargaining agreements, which make your transit service cost more without changing the service. So, we're recognizing the full budget, the full year budget for collective bargaining as well. So, those are things that, what I'm suggesting to you is, is the appreciation of the increase this year. It doesn't prohibit next year increasing drivers, but you are taking on added costs without adding drivers. So, that's an important thing for you to appreciate. And I will admit that my recommendation to bring this budget forward without relying on a tax increase is why there's not enough money to do all the things. But that also was me assuming that what I could put together as a budget would reflect your priorities. It would be enough to spread across all the priorities, and we could agree that we have made a difference in moving forward. We're not falling backward. We're investing in our people, taking care of who we already have on staff through collective bargaining. We are absorbing the additional costs that federal funds will not offset anymore. And we are continuing fare-free service. Fare-free has not been a permanent thing, and that was never, it wasn't implemented knowing that it would be permanent. It was implemented because we're in COVID. And we were also trying to make sure that we could keep the system running because it had to be able to perform a basic service in order to continue to get federal support. We have kept it since all the money that was provided to make it free. We're now eating that cost. So, for everyone who gets on the bus for free today, that's coming out of your pocket as the budget that we have to manage. So, I'm just offering that as explanation. I'm not arguing. I'm not defending. I'm not saying that I don't care. I absolutely get it. I absolutely prioritize transit. Everyone who knows what I've been saying internal and external about transit, I would prefer that we not invest in innovation and invest in making a good service first. That is my personal position, but we are making a decision that we're gonna try to do both. And for that, we are going to spend a lot of money in transit. I appreciate that you keep saying that you are aware that it's gonna cost a lot of money. We have had a significant conversation going with Mr. Williams about what it's gonna take just to increase our facility to support the decisions that we've made. It is millions of dollars. It doesn't change the system at, just because we're doing this. It's not until we get the buses and then the drivers that it changes the system.
So, Sam, do we have any opening? Like, if I look at the city's job listing, are there any positions for transit drivers?
We do have vacancies. We're moving through those. We also have attrition through, we're always gonna have vacancies. And ideally, if we can find that we need to do something in the interim, like, we fill up all the spots, and we have a couple of months where we're not, we don't have a vacancy, we can work to figure out a bridge to getting a couple more drivers, a couple more drivers if we had to. But at this moment, we had, I think we were right at this time last year, adding money to add drivers, and that was not a part of the budget plan. And it took us almost this long to fill those spots. So, again, I appreciate the request, but we're not always able to deliver on just identifying the funds.
So, Sam, will you be able to let us know, like, with the, you know, we're absorbing the cost of the fare? The increase for the collective bargaining? And, you know, for better words, the federal subsidy, we're absorbing that now. I don't need that tonight. I don't think I could.
I can give you two of the three.
What is that, that we are?
What's that spreadsheet look like of what we had, what it is now?
So, the fare-free, the last year that we were collecting fares, it was equating to about a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And then, collective bargaining for twenty-six is a million three. Last year, it was, for half a year, it was about five-eighty-six. And I don't know about the subsidy piece. We'd have to get that from Mr. Williams.
And last year was the top you adding the money to add six new drivers?
Last year, your total new dollars to CAT was a million eight.
Does that include the six-hundred we found at the end?
It did.
So, there's sixty-seven funded driver positions right now. Is that correct? And then, what's the number of vacancies right now?
I don't know today, but when we first started this budget process, there were exactly eight, because Sam was like, oh, we haven't filled any. But that, there's.
Turnover.
Right. And then, I don't know why I always forget, but sixty, there, there's, the Regional Transit Vision Plan, which is, like, very ambitious and big. Then there was CAT's strategic plan, which was, that one, correct, was just getting back to the pre-pandemic baseline. And so, it would be eighty drivers that just restore service to the pre-pandemic level?
I don't, can't remember for sure. I don't remember that it was that many total. Do you remember? Yeah, I, I wanna say it's in the seventies. It's, the number is in the seventies for getting back to pre-pandemic. But it, it goes beyond that for improvements to the network overall.
No, and, yeah, and as you, as you and others have said, I think, I think it's obviously legitimate that we found just the cost of transit has gone up, and also that the wages and benefits we have to provide to drivers also had to substantially go up just to keep a bare minimum of people willing to apply and stay on the job. So, I also think part of that collective bargaining cost is what was necessary to only have eight vacancies versus, you know, twenty or thirty.
Because that was not what we were experiencing the year before.
And so, I think those are all very legitimate points, and it's kind of complex how we figure out how to get there. As you mentioned, just things like, even if we expand service to thirty-minute routes, forget anything with electric buses, just that requires expanding the facility. But I do think there's a very legitimate point from people in the community that we talk about transit, we've stated as a priority. We are not even at the pre-pandemic baseline. We've kind of just stayed in a worse level of service permanently. And so, I do think that's complex to solve, and it's not gonna happen in one budget cycle. But at some point, I think it would be worthwhile for us having some sort of discussion where the cost of the Regional Transit Vision Plan is laid out, the cost of just getting back to pre-pandemic service is laid out, the cost of thirty-minute routes is laid out. And we figure out, what would it look like to fund that? What does it cost? And maybe we, it becomes very clear, the only way to get there for some of these things is the Regional Transit Authority getting new taxing power. But I think that would be very important for the community to see, us to see, and then that form a basis of, if that's what we need, let's create our plan to lobby the General Assembly to get that done. Because I just feel like we're stuck in a point where we haven't confronted that reality.
Yeah, I completely agree, and that's the point of the RTA. And it, it's completely, I was door-knocking the other day and talked to someone that I have a lot of respect for. And basically, I told them we weren't filling the vacancies we have now, and their response was, well, pay more, or have a signing bonus, or have a whatever, whatever. And I'm like, well, we've tried those things. And, you know, we can't just increase pay without some sort of connection to the rest of class and comp, for example. So, we do need a more integrated plan so that we can tell people, you know, here are all the elements, here's what we have been absorbing, and here's a plan to get to a better future state. And really, I think the, the need for additional revenue coming to the RTA is really the key piece. But I would be interested in some more numbers about, you know, where we actually stand on vacancies. How many people have actually applied this year? That kind of information would be very helpful.
Any other comments tonight? I think you just have a couple more slides.
We're done. We're done.
Last one is.
Okay.
By his states.
Okay.
Yeah, just.
Yep.
Next dates.
Next dates. There, any other, any other things you wanna talk about, Sam, or anything?
Nope, that is it.
Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed and no. Thank you.
All in favor, please stand up.